Okay, we are called back to order and so we will make this adjustment and go ahead and get our operations, business and finance report. Dr. Thornton?
Thank you, Dr. Houston. Agenda item 2.06, operations, business and finance. We'll begin with the PPEA update from our assistant city manager, Ron Williams.
Okay, thanks for accommodating my schedule.
Sal, you're up.
Yeah, I look forward to it. I've got plenty of time, I just gotta get to a 4:30 over in Gint, so I think we've got plenty of time for any questions you have. So, let me give some brief highlights, talk about some of the activities we've had particularly in the past quarter mostly, and then after a walk-through this for about 10 minutes here, we also have some drone flyovers. I'd like to show the sites to you, the two schools that we have under construction, just point out what's what on those as well. So, you've seen this slide before, which I don't think you've seen since the last time I showed it to you was the last check there that we went through this collaborative process, interim agreement and design and selecting a design for the four schools and actually getting a comprehensive agreement with a guaranteed maximum price and get underway. So, that was done in November. And during that time, as you may recall, you've seen the circle here before that we had, you know, a high-level PPEA review team, both from the city and school administrations. And once we signed the comprehensive agreement, then that team evolved into a significant number of other people. And for example, you'll see a lot of meetings that happened during the course of that time and then also in the first quarter of this year with these, what we call pre-construction meetings, and you'll see who's been in attendance and the level of detail that we've been working through as we've moved. At the time of comprehensive agreement adoption, we were at 35% conceptual designs and now as of this past month, we're at 100% design on all four schools and of course underway in two of them. So, a significant amount of work has been done since the fall and since the last time that I've seen you and with the cross-pollinization of the two administrative teams, inputs from the principals, inputs from the operations staff, from technology to kitchen and things of that nature. So, that's been ongoing. Recently, that's been a significant amount of work particularly over the past 60 days and will continue for the next 60 days is interiors, color selections and materials. We have, actually tomorrow morning at your construction committee, we'll be presenting what we recommend as our final recommendation for colors for both Camp Estella and for Bowling Elementary. And, you know, some examples here, just to give you some sense of what I'm showing up there in the right, that's a color palette for Bowling Elementary, for the tile work. This is an example of the Larchmont girls restroom tiles. This is an example of we're starting to do some BIM modeling and I hope the next time I come back, we'll be able to give you some 3D walkthroughs of the schools once we nail down these color palettes that we can show you. But this is actually the art suite that we wanted so at Larchmont to be able to make that happen for the music suite that we have in that first floor of the instructional wing. So, good progress on this and we think we're very close and we'll definitely solidify this by June for what the color palettes and the materials in the schools are. I also wanted to highlight something that, we didn't really have a mandate for this, but this was something we picked up during our public engagement. One couple in particular, when we were at Larchmont, mentioned the fact that frankly here in the city that we don't have a lot of ADA accessibility in our playgrounds. And so, the company that the subcontractor that SB Ballard that we're working with right now, PlayCor, actually has a program they're working on with a university to establish inclusive playgrounds. There are seven principals and I don't know them off the top of my head right now. We'll bring some more information back to you. But the point is, we started with wanting to make sure that all the playgrounds at all the schools were ADA accessible, that someone that was, had disabilities or handicapped accessibility needs would be able to actually get on the playground. So, this is an example of actually the model we're looking at for Larchmont and that will be replicated at the others as well. You'll see that there's a ramp and so for actually a portion of that, if there was a child that is in a wheelchair can actually use it. And then also these principles of inclusiveness that are part of this program, that they're wanting us to be a part of a network of national demonstration sites, also gets into social skills and inclusiveness of groups and things of that nature by having some collaborative play and things of that nature. So, just wanted to highlight that. That's something that's evolving as we continue to get through the final key elements of what we're putting at each site. Camp Estella STEM School, we are, I'm gonna show you a flyover here in just a couple minutes, but essentially all the utility works is done on the site. We're still continuing to pour this lab at grade. You're starting to see the classrooms take shape. We're actually, this is dated about 10 days. We're actually up to the third floor of that educational wing. Not sure where it's going. And I'll walk you through Camp Estella in a minute, but what I also want to show you here is we're working on, we've had some what we call BIM modeling. This is the program that SB Ballard uses to help us conceptualize where everything is going. We're working with all of the principals at each of the schools, looking at the common furniture we want to have in the four schools. And what we're gonna do probably realistically in July, and we will make sure we're coordinating an opportunity for you to do this, is at Camp Estella, even pre-completion, we're gonna build four model classrooms so that we can see, you know, a kindergarten classroom, a, you know, 1-3, a 6-8 classroom and a lab. We're gonna put some temporary HVAC into it. We're also gonna test out the wireless access points. So, we make sure we can try to stress the system on the wireless computer access. How many can we get on with the access points that we're looking at? And then also we'll be testing out, so we can pick out the final recommendation for furniture by July. We need to set all those orders in the fall, particularly for the two that are under construction that we have to, you know, that we will open in September '16. And anyway, so that's what they look like in the BIM model and we're gonna do better than that. We're gonna actually show you some real models this summer. So, we're excited about being able to do that and solidify really a standard for 25th century, you know, classrooms that we're gonna have in all four schools. And the construction progress at Camp Estella enables us to do that. Bowling Elementary, I'll show you a flyover of that in a second as well. And just as a reminder of what our schedule is, you know, we're on schedule and in March of next year is when we'll start construction of the other two schools. So, but Camp Estella and Bowling are both on schedule and if we can switch to that first video here, I'll just walk you through a little bit of preview of that. Since y'all probably don't carry hard hat and safety vest in your car like I do or Rex does and can just go on-site at any time, if we can switch to the Camp Estella one, let's see. Is that down? Right here? Well, while we got this up, I'll walk you through Bowling. We just started the foundation this past few days and utility work is underway. That should be complete this month. This just gives you a sense of the context of the school laid out on the site. What you're seeing here is looking, this is looking south and this is your main educational wing and its relation to Princess Anne Road there and the parking lot that will be built out and by the road there. Your gymnasatorium area will be up in this area here. And then the play areas will be back here in this area here. The library site will actually be right here. So, the site is starting to come together and we should start seeing the building go vertical here in the next 60 days at this site. So, making good progress on Bowling. Of course, that didn't start until, you know, we had the groundbreaking back in, what was that, a cold March day? So, if I close this, we'll get to Camp Estella? Okay.
Okay.
So, Ron, is this a live cam that you're doing from?
This is from a drone.
Oh, it is.
It's not live. This is a recording from a couple of days ago, or a may second, actually.
Do we have anything online that we can see live construction? I know they do that on construction sites. I just don't know if we do that here.
We don't really have the ability to do that here yet, but we may later on. Usually, you know, like some of the stuff downtown, you usually do it from somebody else's building and if somebody has a, you know, an IP connection that can put a camera up like that, if we can, we might be able to do that. So, this is looking west. Of course, Indian River right here, Camp Estella up here. This is your, this is the health room. These are your art classes. This is the music rooms. This is the cafeteria, gymnasium here, and then this is the middle school gym. This is the second grade wing and as we dive in, you'll see a little bit, you'll see the kind of breakout here for the STEM breakout activity area and kindergarten over here in first grade.
I'm sorry, Ron, you said the street to the right is?
This is Indian River.
Gotcha.
Yeah. So, we'll fly through here and this is where they're pouring, they're actually pouring part of the slab here. I have a construction inspector out there every day on-site and his 20-plus years in the business, he's definitely seen that who we're getting out there is the A-team in the area, years of experience and they're actually, you know, they're moving very fast and they're doing a great job. So, we're glad to have them. This is the locker room area for the middle school gym. This is that STEM breakout area I mentioned here that's being poured. The drone, he hovered a lot on this back wing here, but I think what he was trying to capture is that the concrete going in and it's, you know, going in nicely. When we, I'm gonna advance this some. When we had the, I think we're gonna be doing the mock classrooms up here on the first and second floor of this wing. Of course, on the first floor is where we have the second grade in this wing. I'm gonna pause it here in just a second. This is your main entrance, the main staircase that will be, you know, kind of your grand entrance staircase will be about right here that goes up to the upper floors. This is the scola, that's that little lecture hall that we had. And then these two areas here, you used to see those openings and their proximity to the classrooms, this being the kindergarten, this being second grade, first grade. That's those STEM breakout areas that we have in the lower levels. And then of course, when we get onto the upper levels, we actually have those STEM labs. So, that's just a, just a little bit of a overview for you of the site. And what you'll start seeing going in over the next few weeks is the steel joints. We'll see a lot of steel going up in the next two weeks.
Can we put it on the website?
It can be, sure. Yeah, so you've got the, you can keep the flash drive. Okay, so, questions?
Yes, Dr. Stewart? I have the honor of sitting on the construction committee and I wanted to start first with how exciting all this is. I mean, all of this at once. I think it's even additionally exciting to know that a library is going in next to one of our schools at the same time for the community. The initial plan was that school system would take care of program. And I wanted you to know for this month and next month, for my time, whenever there are questions related to program, I think there needs to be a new channel of communication between the folks where you are and here over issues related to worries about program, not accusations, just when something emerges. And the reason why I say that is we have construction committee meeting tomorrow and whenever we hear worries, then we have to bother Rex and his colleagues. And I think it would be an enhanced ability to have, now that everything is all settled financially, the contracts are signed, to have a channel of communication so that if there emerges a programmatic concern, that there would be an easy and open channel of communication so we don't have to go through Rex and his colleagues. I think that that would, between the school board and your folks, it would be really wise. But from my standpoint, this is all thrilling. The other comment that I would have that would go beyond June 30th is many of citizens of this community are very excited about this. And they express some dreams and hopes that cannot be fulfilled in this current project. But I would not forget them. I would not forget those ideas and hopes and dreams for some of the facilities because at some point in time, there may be the capacity to deal with that. Let's talk about when the new shopping mall opens up and there's no additional revenues or whatever. But I wouldn't want to forget the great excitement of the community and other things that were not possible to fulfill at this time, but may be possible later. And thank you very much.
Thank you for the presentation and this is very exciting, the possibility of all the schools being built and the wonderful programs that are going to be put into the buildings and all of the new students that we're gonna be able to attract and all the students we're gonna be able to retain. But my question is on the last page of your slide, the best value management. Can you kind of go over what each of these different topics are, if you don't mind? And then the question that I had was, there was some discussion, and this could be, this could be incorrect, about the flooring in the buildings versus tile versus a certain other type of long-lasting flooring and if that was going to be changed? And if you could just speak to that, that would be wonderful.
Sure. So, what we're sharing with you there is some context of when we were at 35% at the adoption of the comprehensive agreement, in order to get within the 101 million that basically was available, we needed to look at some opportunity that we were still over without completely cutting out programming or capacity. There was a significant message that was basically we wanted at this capacity and we needed to fulfill that to get the size we wanted. So, we looked at, okay, without 100% understanding for what pricing might be out there or without the 100% final designs, then we may look at alternatives to, and I break them down into three buckets. Either alternative engineering strategies, public or recreational amenities that likely don't have anything to do with the core education curriculum or even physical education curriculum. And then architectural accents that, you know, of course, anytime you work with a design team, you do get signatures from, you know, your design team that they may suggest they want to leave in the school. But are they necessary for, you know, the conduct? Of course, we want good-looking buildings, but are they really necessary? So, we kind of, we looked at those three general areas. What we saw in some of the, you know, and because it was a significant design team of two different, three different architecture firms and, you know, and a couple of engineering firms that were engaged with the actual structural construction. Some approaches we found as we got particularly into Camp Estella, for example, and Discovery, that foundation, the original concept that we had was that we needed to draw piles. But after analysis by three different environmental consulting firms that certified it with structural engineering certification, we saw that we actually didn't need to do that. And we had a different method for what the, how the foundation should be. So, those are the type of approaches we took with engineering alternatives. There were 60-some drains coming off the roof in, at Camp Estella and that it was, some of it was overkill. So, we looked at for savings that where we had things that just weren't necessary. We had door hardware that actually was not the preferred school system door hardware. And so, we were able to achieve some savings by switching to the preferred door hardware with the preferred locks, things of that nature. So, we did that and those were decisions that we needed to make at the time of the comprehensive agreement, particularly because we were moving towards 100% design. Most of that had to do with the building and most of that to the layman, we would not recognize anywhere in the building. There are a couple of finished items that were in there, one of which we have, well, actually one of them was the second floor restrooms that we had so much discussion about. We didn't have the capacity to do it at 101 million, but once we got into 100% design and got, started to get pricing, the plumbing subcontractors found ways to do it that we were able to pull it back in. And so, they're there. We have the two separate bathrooms in each of the schools. The flooring, we didn't have terrazzo flooring, but we do now in all the main hall, the main entrance hallways, at least from the front to the back bus loop entrances. We do have tiles, just like you have in your other schools, and we do have tiles in the hallways outside the classrooms. We didn't have, we didn't, we didn't have tile on the non-wet walls of bathrooms at the time that we looked at this. In other words, only on the sinks, but not at the, if you walked in the blank wall that you see when you walk in a bathroom, we didn't have tile there. We're gonna put tile there. So, all the engineering, we think we've settled on and it didn't change anything from as far as quality nor of, or have any diminishing structural integrity. Let me talk about, so we accepted most of those. And we gave an intermediate report to Dr. Thornton this week and actually we're continuing to revise that, make sure we're solidifying on exactly what do we did, because someone just went away, because they either weren't necessary or the price worked. The second bucket of public amenities where we looked at, okay, well, right now, in order to stay on budget, we looked at, again, is it core to the instruction that's going on in the school or is it core to the physical education? And so, softball fields, the fitness trails, which, you know, we promoted to have that. But even the city's own stormwater and ADA requirements where we had a disconnect between the mulch path that was proposed and the conceptual designs versus the pavement path that we actually think we require. And so, we're still working through that. And then the architectural accents, things like the, we never had monuments in any of the schools except for that corner sign that we had at Larchmont, fencing around BMPs. But we have decided not to accept those and are actually using capacity of some of the contingency we have in the project to take care of those public amenities or those architectural accents that we had looked at in a, which was a pretty robust list. The list was about $3 million worth of items. And what I included there were highlights of anything that was more than $20,000 because we actually got down to some things that were a couple hundred dollars. We were looking for the change in the cushions scenario. And came up with some good strategies, but we, but some of the, one item, for example, each of the existing schools have five-foot sidewalks. And we had proposed that at the main entrances, we have 12-foot and then on the sides that we have 10, excuse me, eight feet. And so, one value engineering strategy or value management strategy that we looked at is, okay, well, let's reduce it to by two feet from 12 to 10 or from eight to six and then incorporate the five-foot sidewalks that exist. As it stands today, we're keeping the extra wide sidewalks. And we may revisit that one if we, you know, we have some unforeseen and feel like we're bumped up against the 101 million again. But we'll probably keep, you know, right now as it stands, we look like we're good to go to keep the extra wide sidewalk. So, that's a philosophy. That was the approach. And we will be sharing with the school system, you know, as we make any changes to that list and also the council as well.
The photo that you showed of the pre-K, I mean, of the playground area for possibly the, I guess, all of the schools that you're gonna be building, is that, what grades are that, is that gonna encompass?
That's the, I think the one they're showing here is for the 1-5.
1 through 5?
Yeah.
Okay. And then so, Camp Estella would have two different playgrounds?
Yeah, well, actually, at every school, you have a separate kindergarten playground. And that's the one that the classrooms open out to the kindergarten.
Right.
Where you have pre-K, it will be, you know, we have the, kind of the wedge of each of the schools that has that open courtyard. The pre-K will be housed there. And then the 1-5, what we did was we, and particularly because we wanted to include this accessibility as we, we took the same area mass and combined where, and we had an extra play pad and we've taken that cost and put it into the ADA ramps instead and just combined the 1-5.
It may be more for Dr. Thornton and both of you, but in the board as a whole. So, I've been serving on the Camp Estella SPMT. I know at one of the meetings, the conversation came up about furniture. And I know you just described that we're buying the furniture for all the schools the same. And I don't know anything about school furniture, not trying to know anything about school furniture, but the idea that the STEM school may have some differentiated components based upon whatever our programming goals would be versus what may be at other schools would suggest to me that maybe there's some additional review. So, I guess I'm still trying to get some sense of confidence that there's some strong push for this Camp Estella STEM school to have what it needs to be the best in the state while at the same time recognizing that you have these needs that you have in terms of bulk pricing and so forth. But I just don't have a good feel for that. So, can anybody speak to who is driving either on the programmatic side or on the programmatic and the construction side to make sure that what we are putting in Camp Estella is really positioning us to be the type of STEM school that we talked about?
We met two days ago.
Yep.
To have that exact conversation because what we need to do is, and Ron actually approached me about it because we're at a critical point. We need to pull together our curriculum team and we need to determine what those programs need in terms of furnishing. Ideally, we like to have a baseline of the type of furniture that each school could have, but we know there're gonna be some unique needs at the various schools. So, we've got to pull together the curriculum people to really talk about what we need in that building to facilitate those programmatic uses. But again, we've got to do it in such a way that we kind of strike a balance between what we can use over the next 20, 15 to 20 years versus what we think we might need just on day one to match the concept of STEM. Because obviously, we can't put something in there now and then for whatever reason, we don't plan to change the program, but if for some reason the emphasis shifts, we've got to get all the furnishing. So, we gotta have a baseline, but we want to make sure that it'll accommodate STEM.
Couple of background things. So, first of all, yeah, Camp Estella, you start with that and as a bit of an approach. So, if you're, Camp Estella, you start with the, how are you gonna furnish Camp Estella? And what we're hoping, obviously, so that there is, the procurement aspect of it is the last point. You know, we would like to achieve an appropriate procurement and, but also help you with a standardization. Right now, as it stands, an individual principal selects what furniture and how it goes into the school. And so, what we've done is we've, a collaboration of all the principals involved with the administration to look at, well, what have we done recently and then what are some best practices that are out there? What you've done recently, of course, is at Crossroads and so we have that as a baseline. And then you've got the Academies for Discovery where my daughter will attend next year. And so, we've got those as two in-house baselines to look at. And then we start with, okay, what do we need for a STEM program at Camp Estella? What we'd like to do is help though, if this Norfolk school system is moving towards a discipline of STEM, you know, perhaps throughout the system to be prepared for that. And so, you're looking at the flexibility of the furniture and how that fits in that could hopefully also pollinate into the other three schools. So, you'll have probably more standardization across the three K5s or the PK5s than at Camp Estella. But you start with making sure that you meet the goals and the objectives of the Camp Estella STEM. Hopefully, that pollinates and it kind of trickles into the other three as well. And so, that's why we're using the mockups where we think we'd like to start at STEM and then make sure, make sure that the other three are hopefully able to react to and achieve that same goal of that type of learning if that's what you want to do.
Right. And, you know, I guess I'd recommend that cycle because I understand we've talked about the concepts of STEM disciplines or techniques being taught across the district. So, the Berkeley Early Childhood Center has a Connect Ed Grant where they're, all the teachers and all the students are being equipped with iPads and Apple products and so forth. So, you're gonna have that cohort of students of which some group of them will then end up going to So you're gonna have that cohort of students of which some group of them will then end up going to Camp Estella if we keep the same pathway. And so just trying to get a sense that the investment that we're making or the advantage that we have because of that grant that's happening at the Early Childhood Center then can feed into Camp Estella and at some point hopefully also tie into the CTE school and so forth. I'm just trying to get a good sense that we're looking at it that way. I don't know if you all have taken any visits to even STEM schools that are in the region outside of Norfolk and got a sense of?
Members of the team have, yes. So all the designs were, uh, particularly Camp Estella, it all started with that. I mean, it's a significant amount of benchmarking and understanding of that, not only that discipline, but also how you furnish that. And that's where we started, all the way going back to the selection of the, of the teams that, to build the schools. That was part of those discussions, how do you do this? What is your approach, particularly because this is the first, one of the first that we know of, maybe even nationwide, that was just built at this grade level for STEM. It, the STEM, building a STEM school doesn't exist out there right now. And so, you know, we are having to create the model.
And that was, you know, I had mentioned before, there's a engineering school in South Carolina, there's a K8 STEM school in Baltimore, but whatever it is that makes us cutting edge.
Yeah.
I think from a, both from an academic standpoint and from a fiscal standpoint, I'm just trying to get a sense that we're, that we're there and if we are. Maybe that's just a board update to get a sense of, you know, where we are. And if we aren't there, that before we get too far down the path, that we can really have a discussion around what do we need to do to make sure that we get there?
Yeah, so the team is neck deep, neck deep in that right now. The next 60 days is really critical for, um, to, for us to be able to, uh, to get informed of what the school system wants. And then we will start to, to price that and then, you know, start to get orders in in the fall.
Questions, when you talk about the value engineering, cause that's really what it is, it's called value engineering, which is where we're trying to get the costs out. Have we looked at the maintenance costs that will result from that down the road so that we know as an operating budget, what we're gonna have to carry moving forward?
To the best of our ability. Again, this, this is one of those that we're in, to some degree, in uncharted territory doing four at once, but to the best of our ability.
So I ask the question knowing that after these schools are built, we're gonna have to carry the maintenance costs, which comes out of the operating budget and/or how big it is depending on CIP, which we know are limited on both fronts. So we just need to be very mindful that whatever changes we make today, we're not paying for tomorrow in five to 10 years. And that we're not saddling the school division with expenses that we frankly can't afford. And whether they're predictable today or not, I don't know. I just ask us to be very mindful of that so that we're not cutting ourselves too short today and then therefore even incurring a greater expense tomorrow. The other thing is, is where are we with Camp Allen?
Is, uh, so the city manager recommended inclusion of the funding for that in his introduced budget. So the council takes their first budget hearing tonight, the real estate hearing tomorrow night. So if the council approves that funding, then it is in the fiscal year 16. And we have already been, uh, re-engaged, um, the appropriate federal entities for the application for that. And then it will be a matter of, um, the timing for the CIP monies of where does it hit sequentially? Realistically, it is definitely fifth, uh, if not layered in with the other two. We, we haven't solidified that yet.
Great, so as the budget stands now, which I know it's subject to change, it's in the city budget to pay for the 20% percent?
It is, and this was, this was actually an option in the comprehensive agreement that could be executed, um, by January of this upcoming year.
Gotcha.
So, so, um, you know, so, you know, frankly, the design continues.
Yeah.
And, uh, and we're preparing the package and, um, you know, we're, you know, pretty bullish that it'll be included in, in the budget. So we're, we're, we're doing that work.
Okay, great, that's good. And then, um, I echo frankly with what Dr. Stewart said is, this is a great presentation, Ron, thank you for coming. And I say that very sincerely. But, um, at some point, let's, can we figure out a more regular way of communication so that we are hearing what's going on? And it doesn't necessarily mean that Ron has to come to every meeting either, but is there, is it Lori Crouch or Elizabeth? Is it Construction Committee, PPA? I don't know what it is, I leave that to you, Dr. Thornton, but I feel like this is a good presentation today. But things are changing all the time, I know, Ron, with all the work you're doing. And how do we stay current with that so that when friends and neighbors come up to us and they say, hey, I've heard, I've heard, that would be good to know as well. So I just think that's just a recommendation I would make, that it would be helpful, I'm sure, for city council members to know what's going on. And I, I know you keep them up to date too, but for all of us to kind of know what's happening in relatively short order when it is occurring.
All right, Dr. Stewart?
All right, build on things that were just said. My high recommendation is that there be a school board member regularly in communication with this team. I know we could not be part of it with the negotiation process, but now it's time to have that. Just to ameliorate any of the communication difficulties, particularly as it goes to program. And then to, to give you an example, which you already know the example I'm gonna use, and I don't want a response tonight. But the example is, you choose terrazzo floors and you don't have to replace the tiles for four schools over the next, next number of years. You don't choose terrazzo skills and you may have floors and you may have to. That's the kind of example we're talking about. But I think if there were a school board person, not an administration person, because they're great communicating to us. But if there was a school board member in regular communication with the folks making these decisions, I think it would begin to ameliorate all of these concerns, particularly as it goes to program. And again, don't need a response to terrazzo versus not terrazzo.
So program, uh, I guess I'd like some definition of that in the future, cause, uh, and I, I do have to, I continue to get this 4:30. So program to me means, uh, more instruction versus construction, uh, so.
But it may mean annual CIP plan when you have to increase.
So perhaps you could work with Dr. Thornton that outside of the regular meeting that we come to monthly, like tomorrow morning, the Construction Committee, that what beyond that, without engagement with the contractor, which I, I don't think is, uh, perhaps appropriate.
It's time for the school board to know directly what's going on.
And we'll, we'll ensure that the board gets the Construction Committee reports as they come on a monthly basis.
Yeah, we give a pretty robust, uh, report.
They're good reports.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Thank you, Ron.
We'll stay here with the operations, the business and finance report and finish this out with the CH 116 and then the, uh, operating budget update.
CH 116 or Title I, uh, school year 1516, uh, grant budget planning. Ms. Campson and I'll chime in as appropriate, as well as, uh, an update on what we're doing with the current year, uh, Title I awards. Ms. Campson?
Good afternoon, everyone, again. As you know, uh, the superintendent developed a action plan for our Title I spending to keep us on track, uh, so that we're sure that every single penny that we get for our children goes directly to our children. Today, uh, and as part of that plan, uh, we give you monthly updates. So you're right in, in with us. So this is going to be very, very quick, we're gonna just run through the steps and the action plan. I did move one of the steps up a little bit from the original plan, if you noticed, so that they were more, cause I'm so, I don't know, whatever, have to have everything exact, I wanted it to be in chronological order. So that's what we're gonna go through quick and you'll be able to see exactly where we are. If you do step one. Ms. Banks? Oh, oh, I had it? Oh, okay, here I go again. And I, why does everyone else have no trouble with this?
Is it all? Did you turn it on?
Speaking of interventions, and tier three?
There you go.
And tier three? Where are you pointing it?
There you go.
To get that, and you're using this button, right?
Yes.
Okay.
No, this button.
Oh, that's why I wasn't, wasn't, okay. Okay, our first action step was to secure a highly qualified person for our new senior coordinator of title programs. And that person who was with us today, Ms. Jamie Fitcher, Fitchner?
Fitzner.
Is here and she began on April 20th, we had a parade in her honor. We were so excited, at least I was so excited. Maybe, maybe in hindsight, it was just me parading, I'm not sure. But either way, we're very excited. So that is now marked completed. So first action step is done. Action step two.
I'll click for you.
Never mind, obviously I can't use electronics. Action step two was reassign the, all of the different, uh, title-related, um, federal budget positions to the, uh, Budget Department, which made sense. Uh, we are in progress of doing that. The Title I Budget Analyst has already been reassigned, um, and is working with the Budget Office. Uh, the remaining four grant budget technician positions are in transition. They've already really started working there, but they're in transitions for the permanent assignment. So that's an in-progress one, but it will be completed next time you see this. Action step three, uh, we, uh, now moving on to our new, it's already time for CH 16 for next year because we're on a, um, timeline to have our budget and application submitted to the state quickly this year. So we needed to have the individual school proposed Title I budgets to our office by May 1st, and that is done. We do have all of those proposed, uh, budgets by school. They are currently being reviewed by our new Senior Coordinator of Title I Programs. And she is contacting principals for any changes so that we will have those finished this week so we can move on to the district. And so, so that is completed. Yay, I don't know why I'm applauding. Come on, guys. All right, action step four. Present proposed division Title I budget to the Executive Cabinet for review and discussion. This is, of course, in progress because the first step on that was to get the school plans. Once those are reviewed and, and aligned, then we will begin working on that application and that will go to the cabinet. Five. And this just tells you as we move through the next steps what our timeline is. Once it goes to the cabinet, of course, it will go to the school board for final approval. And we will be then, uh, sending the application to the state in a timely manner. It is due by July 1st. Our goal is to have it in by mid-June. When we talk to people at the State Department, they, you know, we've had a, a problem with the coming back so slowly and our funds not going into place right away. And so we're on a, a timeline to get it in early before they get swamped with all of the other districts getting theirs in on July 1st. So our goal is to have it to the board June 15th, approved hopefully, and, uh, on its way the next day. So that we beat everybody else. Then we go to six, which is once we get the money to make sure that it's spent in a timely manner. And that timely manner is you have the action plan and you know we have those dates for next year that we have to have certain percentages of the budget spent. And so we'll be monitoring that through the year. And step seven is what we're doing right now, reporting to you. And that's pretty much where we are with it. I'm really feeling very, very good about what the district's done. Everyone's really, the Budget Department and my office and the, and the Title I office have been working very closely and meeting on a regular basis. Plus, uh, we have been in ongoing contact with the people at the State Department who oversee the Title I program to make sure that we are doing exactly what we need to be to make sure that every single penny is spent for our children in a timely manner. Any questions?
So Mike, you also have to replace, um, the monthly update on the budget status of all of our federal and state awards. Just to kind of recap, uh, we're currently, with Title I specifically, operating two grants concurrently. You have the CH 14 and the CH 15. And we have, as Ms. Campson indicated, uh, over the last several weeks, been working with individual principals as they work with their executive directors to develop those spending plans that will take us through all of the awards that have been granted to meet those spending thresholds. Uh, we also, uh, something that we did, that we're doing differently this year is that, on the advice of DOE, we've already sent up preliminarily what those spending plans are to get some feedback from them as to whether or not those plans would be basically approved. So we're getting that feedback and our expectation is that we'll begin the procurement process towards those plans within the next week or so. Uh, it's a lot of work to be done in a short period of time, but principals have been diligent. Uh, they've been working with their executive directors. The Title I office has been working, uh, side by side with, uh, budget and accounting as well because accounting plays a critical role in that, uh, process as well. So, uh, we feel like, uh, we've got the, the process in place, now we've gotta execute. And we've got to ensure that the things that we are purchasing are indeed, uh, appropriate and can be useful and connected. We've got to show the connection to the state between the things that we purchase and some student outcomes, student achievement goals, and they have to be aligned with the Title I plan. So it's not just a matter of just spending to meet a deadline, but it has to be appropriate. It has to be aligned with the application and it has to be connected to some type of student achievement outcome.
All right, ends everyone, let's go off.
Okay, so, um, you'll be familiar with my line of questioning from the last two. So the good thing is, what I see so far is that we are 89% expended and or encumbered for Title I for CH 115, which is greater than the 85% that's required by September 30th. So that's great. That leaves 1.3, though, still for us to spend. Do we have plans in place for that to be spent? So truly, while we're meeting the 85% threshold, let's not leave a penny on the table.
Yes, the, the planning that has taken place included both the CH 114.
Right.
Which we have to expend in 100% of it by September 30, 15, as well as the spending to meet the 85% target.
Right.
For CH 115. So yes, uh, the principals, when they were developing their plans, they were developing plans for both 14 and 15. To completely spend out 14 and to meet, uh, the minimum 85% for 15.
Okay, so of the 1.368 for CH 114, that's the remaining balance as of April 30th. There are plans on the table, are they at the Board of Education for review and approval or are they with us to?
They're at the Board of Education for feedback as to whether or not those plans would be approved once we spend the money.
Okay.
And submit the official reimbursement request.
And that all can happen between now and September?
Yes, 15.
Yes.
I'm working on it. And, and, and I actually had a very long, uh, phone conversation with the, the people at the State Department who had already reviewed both because the Budget Department had gotten them there so quickly and gave us a, a line-by-line list of the red flags. And then that's what, when we met with the budget and accounting people, uh, a couple of days ago. Those were shared with them and, and, and all the principals that needed to make changes have already been contacted and are making, and making those changes. Changes have to be finished by today, as a matter of fact, so that we can just move right on.
So I have two more follow-ups. So last month when you reported, it was about a $7 million federal grant program remaining balance available. Now we're down to about 4.8. So you've explained the 1.3, and I'm talking about for 2015. Uh, so you've explained the 1.3, which is great. And so there's still remaining federal grant programs?
Yes.
I'll ask it like Mr. Jordan did, please give me the confidence, or what's the confidence level the board should have that that's gonna be encumbered and, and spent as appropriate and in a timely way?
We are confident based on the activities that are taking place now. There's still work to be done. Uh, we've got Title II.
Right.
That's a significant portion of it that needs to be done.
Right.
So we're confident and we have the expectation that we're gonna do what it takes to get these monies utilized in an appropriate way by the deadlines.
Okay.
But it's an ongoing process. And we don't wanna just spend frivolously.
Right.
It has to be thoughtful, it has to pass, uh, the reimbursement test as well. Uh, we haven't had a, a major problem getting reimbursements through. But again, we, we have to make sure that it's aligned to the plan and that it's, uh, it's pointed towards student achievement.
Right, and I agree with that completely. So my last question is, state grant program, state operating program, operated hospitals?
Yes.
Top of the second page, did we miss spending some money based on a program closing date?
No, with this program, it closes, as you see there, March 31, 2015.
Right.
But we also will be allowed to, uh, have reimbursements for the fourth quarter. They just have a closing date that ends before 6:30. So what we have to do is provide the state with the estimated expenditures through the fourth quarter.
Okay.
Although we have not incurred all of those expenditures as of April 30th. So for May and June, those expenditures will be incurred and then they, they will eat into that remaining balance.
Okay, okay, thank you.
All right, Reverend Haywood?
So, um, what I would like to know is, I think you were speaking to this, Ms. Campson, about, um, I, I remember last year that the Title I grants, when I was asking questions about those grants, that I think that one of the, the, the reasons why we, we were so late in, in getting this grant out is because the state kicked back on the applications because of mistakes and things like that. Did, did you just say that you have, that the state has reviewed? Did you just say that you have, that the state has reviewed the application, or will be reviewing the application for this? Or how can we prevent the delay of grants because of mistakes in applications or areas of concern that the state may have?
That's such a great question. And what we're doing in our office is we have learned a great lesson from the Budget Office, who submitted all of the, what we're going to roll into being the transfer request ahead of time for review and are now making the changes so that everything's set. So when we begin working on the application, the district application, then we'll be doing the same thing. We've worked very hard over the last couple of months to develop a really good working relationship with the people at the State Department, and we're at the point now that between one or the other of us, Jamie or myself, pretty much almost every day, we're in contact with them with questions. We don't leave any gray areas. If we have the least bit of doubt or concern, or we're not really sure, then we're, we just pick up the phone and say, "What do you think about this? And do you have another suggestion, or is this good to go?" And that way, our hope is that by the time this application goes to the State Department, it's going to be pretty clean. We're not waiting around, and if there is a problem, we'll be on the phone with them right away, and we'll be correcting it the next day.
The mistakes that were made last year on these applications, are they having any impact on the application and the funding that we are putting forth this year?
Well, they won't because we're aware of what those were, and we are making changes. We'll be making changes based on any information that's come to us about any concerns about those. And I can't speak to everything there exactly, I wasn't here, but anything that's come to our attention is, will already be being changed.
Thank you.
Yes, this is the CH-116, the allocation that we saw a reduction from, I remember hearing something about we were looking at some cuts or something?
Actually, right now, at least the preliminary numbers indicate that there would be an increase, but until the state finalizes it, we won't know the exact amount. But right now, preliminarily, it appears that there may be an increase in funding for CH-16.
Okay, so is there one, another allocation where there was some reduction that you're aware of?
The past two years, we've seen a reduction.
And I think maybe what happened was the state always recommends that when we ask the principals to prepare their budgets, that we have them do it with a 10% reduction just in case. So these plans that just came in from our principals were all done with that 10% recommended cut. In fact, when we got the letter that said that the state actually got more money this year, I actually called, because you know, more money, I'm there, and said, "Well, do I no longer need to do that 10% reduction? Have my schools do that since it looks like there's more money." And the advice I was given was, "To be safe, go ahead and do it with the 10% reduction because you can always add, but no, you can't, if you overspend, then you have a problem." So that's, we followed their advice because that's why we're asking for it. And so we do anticipate, as Dr. Thornton said, that we'll probably get more, and we will have a plan in place for that if it comes, but we will not put it in the initial application.
All right. Great. Thank you.
Not about this year, it's about 2015, 2016. Have you got any suspicion of the final number and when you're going to get it? How it's going across the street?
Well, on day one, May 1st, Mr. Jones and I met, and we talked about what our current gap is of 4.8, and we agreed that we would work together to close that gap. It would take some, quite honestly, some adjustments on both sides-
Sure.
...in what the city can do to provide us more, but they likely won't be able to meet us the entire way at this point. So we will, we'll work on our end to address that, but one of the things we talked about, Mr. Jones and I, was that for us, the compensation initiatives that the board has in its plan, the 2% for full-time contracted staff, the initiatives for transportation staff, and health insurance funding for staff to hold harmless for us, and it's considered to be non-negotiable at this point. And we agreed that we would, around those parameters, work together to close the gap. So they're, we're going to try to meet each other halfway for lack of a better description.
My question about when we might be needing to consider what our options are. Got a feeling on that?
Once we, once the city makes the determination and the council approves, then we'll definitely know officially what our funding will be. But we're going to, we're going to begin as a cabinet, working towards those reduction scenarios to close that gap or meet halfway.
Could be some feedback from this group will be important to you.
I'm sure.
Yeah. We'll get there, I'm sure. Do it, yeah.
One final item you have also in your packet, it's not an agenda item, but you have in your packet a one-page document that summarizes for the board our recent fall enrollment versus spring average daily membership. We have submitted our spring data collection to the DOE, which includes our average daily membership, which essentially drives our state funding for the current year, and you will see highlighted there in bold, our fall membership for September 2030 was $29,931. That's our K-12 funded fall membership for state reporting purposes. Our spring ADM, or average daily membership, as of March 31, 2015, which really represents the final adjusted amount that the state will fund, provide state funding for this year, $29,724, representing a less than 1% decline of 207 students or just under .7%. And as you can see, that's a, that decline is not at the same rate as it has been on average the last four years, so that's a good thing. Obviously, it includes the additional students that we've been serving since the fall with open campus. So that's been a plus, and we've also seen just the rate of reduction in losing the number of students from fall to spring to be on a slight, a slower rate. It does not, it does not lead us to believe that we're going to have a significant change in our trends over the next several years, but it is good news for this year, and it translates to some additional ADM-driven SOQ funding for this year. And you can see in the middle block there that we built the current year's budget, 2014-15, on an estimated average daily membership of $29,598. And again, the actual average daily membership as of March 31, as we reported to the state last week, is $29,724, representing a difference of budget to actual of a positive 126, and that translates to approximately $600,000 in additional state revenue. But we'll also have some shortfalls in some state revenue categories, particularly in our special layer regional tuition because we did not have to serve as many kids this year. Therefore, we're not entitled to the same amount of funding that we would have had last year. So it's offset, but it is a positive, at least a positive one-year trend for us. And that'll drive some adjustments that we'll make to our fall membership projection for next year. So when you see the final budget that we'll provide you over the next few weeks, it'll also show in an effort to close the gap, an increase in projected state revenue because our average daily membership will be up slightly compared to what we built the proposed budget on. And that's a good thing.
Okay, yes. Next, Stuart.
Oh, you know, Dr. Gabriel astutely pointed out, was it 81 folks with the new cornerstone of our cornerstone drawing in? And I know that you hope that this anticipated figure for 15, 16 is affected positively-
Yes.
...by that initiative at this time next year.
And it does reflect an estimate based on the number of kids that we anticipate coming in as new to the division. So that as well will be positive.
Cool.
Want to say that to you? Thank you very much. We're going back up now to item 2.04 for our School Board Policy Committee. Dr. Thornton?
Item 2.04, School Board Policy Committee. Dr. Birdsong will lead this discussion.
Good afternoon. Dr. Houston, this is Dool, members of the School Board. On Friday, May the 1st, members of the Policy Review Committee met. We discussed a variety of parking lot issues to include items related to the DeYoung-Richter study. We also talked a lot about incentives for schools challenged by retention, as well as a family engagement policy that we hope to develop and present to you before the beginning of the 2015-2016 school year. We did present to you three policies for your review today. We actually reviewed six policies during our meeting, but we decided that three of those policies need further review by our legal team and the administration. So at this time, I would like you to ask questions if you have any questions about those three policies, which include GBEB, which was military leave and benefits, JCB, transfers by students in persistently dangerous schools, and JFCDA, student assault and/or battery on staff. Did you have any questions related to those three policies?
So just a comment, JFCDA, it's a new policy, student assault, and a battery on staff. Yes?
Yes, and we did have further discussion. It was decided that we would present that policy to you, but I would tell you that Dr. Haywood, Reverend Haywood, had some questions and concerns about the policy, so we wanted to present it to you as written today, but we will discuss the policy because there is a concern about students who are returning from a long-term suspension or a long-term suspension with special conditions, being able to return back to their home schools because we know some teachers may have concerns about that or a victim's student. And so we wanted to go ahead and present the policy to you as written, but again, we may come back with revisions.
Well, so let me have something to say, and I want to try to be as clear as I can be on this. I agree with and support the spirit of this policy, understand its necessity because of the prevailing issues related to student assault on staff. And I do understand that there's certain behavior that can't be and shouldn't be tolerated. And on that same note, I also, and I see the piece in here about the superintendent and his or her designated administration, being able to look at each case separately.
That's right.
And I think that's important because as strong and as good and as important as a policy may be, I think zero tolerance kinds of policies, depending upon the district and nature of the district, can be, you know, dangerous in some sense and tie the hands oftentimes of the School Board and the administration. So I do understand that the hands are not totally tied here, and I don't want anybody to think for one second that I support or condone student assault on staff or anybody else, for that matter. But I think there always ought to be, to whatever extent reasonable, an opportunity to look at situations, causes, you know, yada, yada, so that, you know, this one shoe doesn't fit every foot in every incident. And I know, you know, I'm on thin ice here, but I just want us always to be cautious of that. I've seen in the past what some zero tolerance type approaches can lead to, and so whatever that's worth.
Yeah, well, we can't that say.
Sure.
And thus, that's the reason why we placed that clause there-
Yeah.
-that these things can be reviewed. As the policy now stands-
Yes.
-a student may assault a staff person, and the issue of expulsion never arise.
Right, right.
And having looked at some of the policies of the surrounding districts and to see how other districts as well handle this, they handle it in a very similar way. So I would agree with you that the current climate in which students assault staff members is such that it impacts the morale of schools, and I think that it's important for us as a School Board to make a strong statement to our community that we want safe, we want to see our schools provide a safe environment for staff members. And thus, I think that, in particular for not just teachers, but our security staff who are constantly being assaulted, that we have to take an additional step to try to discourage this type of assault. And so this is the reason why we have put this policy forward. I think that, I think that this will make a statement that way, so, thank you.
And, I'm sorry. In addition, we did discuss an equity policy-
Sure.
-that was introduced to the committee in terms of a model policy from Roanoke City Public Schools. And so we did have just a few minutes at the end of our meeting to discuss that, so we hope to be able to bring some recommendations to you during the next at least two meetings. We should be able to have a recommendation to you. At this time, the administration is reviewing that policy for feedback to the committee, and we're excited about that. And so Mr. Jordan, he brought this particular policy to our attention. So Mr. Jordan, did you want to add something about?
Mr. Jordan, before you go into that equity policy, let me just say one more thing about this previous-
I'll just take that one, please.
Yeah. Also, I think it's important for us to note as a board that the schools made a very significant and profound commitment to the PBIS. And whereas we are instituting this type, or we're seeking to institute this type of policy, it should be noted that the PBIS, a positive behavior intervention system that we're looking at, has and will, over time, decrease in a positive manner the number of referrals and suspensions and indeed expulsions because we are dealing with our students in a very positive manner. And so I think that the two of those approaches have to be pursued by our division to bring about the type of safe environment that we're interested in. I think that we cannot look at one without the other. I think it would be a mistake for us not to make some strong statements about these assaults on staff members and teachers, while on the other hand, I think that it's important for us to make sure that our students are just not being put out of class for very, or put out of school for issues that really should be dealt with by the teacher in a positive manner.
Yeah, and I was just going to, I mean, we, as you can tell, we spent a lot of time talking about that. The point that you raised was something that we spent a great deal of time on. And we even thought that because of this, you know, this may be one of those policies where we may want to have two readings of it and give people an opportunity to really digest the impact of it, and like we did before, give public comment. But Reverend Haywood is exactly right. We're trying to find this balance because, you know, you look at numbers, we have some issues, and we want to make sure that our staff are protected and feel protected, but at the same time, recognize that we want to make sure that the process is fair and equitable in that we aren't, and we even talked about cultural sensitivities and a whole lot of things, that we need to make sure that it's wrapped around this policy.
I really think we should be deliberate in our approach to this policy because of its language, and we want to be very careful with tread, so I think a second reading is warranted. And with PBIS, the way PBS is being implemented and is implemented around the country is that it starts from the bottom up. You start affecting the grades, the elementary grades, then it goes to the middle school grades, and then it goes to the high school grades. Well, we're only in our second full year of implementation of that, so it's going to be a while before the positive effects of the PBS- So it's going to be a while before the positive effects of the PBS programs will be affected at the secondary level. So I think a balance between the two is definitely necessary.
And Mr. Cloud or Dr. Berthong can correct me, but I think we discussed and found that Norfolk was kind of an outlier in not having a policy like that. Is that correct, or is that in? We talked about so many, I just wanted to make sure.
I think so. We've looked at some of the policies of the surrounding area. They tend to have something similar to this with the provision for a possible exception where all of it is a battery. The violence doesn't warrant expulsion. And the administration can recommend something less than expulsion.
And also, Dr. Lynn sat in and he, you know, asked her, she was looking at it in terms of the work that we have with the Mid-Atlantic Equity Center and all that. So all of that has been going through staff review and disreviewing what we're presenting to you today.
All right, Stuart.
We began this discussion with saying that you liked the idea that there was an escape clause, as Mr. Cloud said, that would not be confining in the event there's a case by case decision that needs to be made. I think that was your original position.
Right.
And since it was in there, the strong statement that this policy would make didn't bother you as much. Is that what I heard?
Oh, absolutely. Because I think, again, we ought to send a strong message that, you know, assaults on anybody, and certainly on, you know, staff, is not going to be tolerated in this district. And I wholeheartedly support that. But I also know, and we talked some years ago, a good deal about adult behaviors.
Right.
You know, and cases where an adult may, you know, snatch a hand off a kid's head, you know? A kid may push the adult as a result of it. I'm saying the kids should push the adult, but, you know, snatching a hand off a kid's head is probably not the best approach to that situation. And other kinds of adult behavior that we've talked about over the years. And so, I'm comfortable with the spirit of the conversation, the spirit of the policy. I simply wanted to make that statement. I'm glad that it was a part of the discussion. Because it can be complex in nature. And we've seen as a board, times when we've sat in all kinds of different situations where, you know, we felt like perhaps we could do something different based on the uniqueness of this incident. Sometimes, depending on how policies are written, you know, maybe you can't apply it differently.
All I've heard in the conversation that followed your initial statement
Sure.
is confirming that there is the possibility of making an individual decision here. So I haven't heard any disagreement at all, have you?
No, no, I have not. Okay. So next step for this policy, as it obviously now would not be between this agenda, is that what I'm hearing?
Right.
And.
Going to put it out for public comment as well.
Okay, any other questions or comments on this item, agenda item?
So just to get an equity policy.
Yeah.
Family engagement policy, want to try to get to the board before this school year is up. And we'll be working hard to the Friday of Memorial Day weekend to prepare for you.
No, what did we move it?
No, we didn't. I think we kept it the Friday before.
I thought we moved it, we were considering moving it so that we could get feedback into the, what's the meeting we have on the 27th?
Milestones.
In the milestones?
Well, the 22nd is the Friday of Memorial Day weekend.
Okay, this, okay.
It is.
Okay.
So it's before the 27th.
Okay.
So it's scheduled for the 22nd, the meeting.
So we want, if anything came out of that, that we could feed into the milestones discussion.
Great.
Equity, that would be important.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, Human Resources, 2.05.
Dr. Ronnie Myers-Dobbs is here to provide the board with an update on staff vacancies.
Good afternoon, Dr. Houston, Mrs. Doyle, Dr. Thornton, members of the board. I sent a report which reflects retirements, resignations, and early commitments that we have to date. This is just a snapshot in time. We do not have a report that we did like this last year, so I don't have any comparison data that you can look at by school. However, I can share, you know, with the termination report that you receive each month. At the end of last year, we had a total terminations for that year, which was 353. And in June, it was 285. So that was the number of teachers that either reflected a retirement or resignation in June because people that come forward that want to retire at the end of the year, obviously, they submit their paper early, but it doesn't reflect on that report or on the docket until June 30th. So if you look at the report that I provided you, you'll see that right now, we have a total between retirements, 33, and resignations, 50. So 83 people here reflect that they're terminating June 30th. So that would be your comparison. I thought about that after you asked that question. So, and again, one of the things that we focused on with the last job fair was interviewing for the district and increasing the number of early commitments. So, in the column on the far right where you see early commitments that are assigned to buildings, those are teachers that were hired after September 30th. So they have a year-only contract. So we reach out to those individuals first if they're recommended by their principal and secure them for early commitments for next year. So that's what the column reflects on the right for those that are assigned to the actual school buildings. But at the bottom where it has unknown placements, those will be early commitments that we have secured for placement for next year. And so, about 26, it's increasing each day. We had 26 early commitments at the job fair that we held a couple weeks ago. But as we get additional information, documentation to complete applications, we continue to interview people. So that number's increased a little bit.
Thanks, Stuart.
Not for tonight, but for the next executive session, the numeral four appears. I'd love for you to be prepared in the executive session to explain that to me.
The numeral four?
Yeah, on the top page.
Okay, okay.
You got it?
Okay.
You see where it is?
Yeah.
It's unusual, it's confusing, and I do not want to discuss it in public. I'd like that to be an executive session explanation.
Okay.
Got it.
And again, these numbers have changed too because we have received some additional information, so.
Do I need to explain that?
No, I got it.
Okay, any questions, other questions are coming? Thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay, there is no community engagement report tonight. And so, I'm sorry?
No NEF report tonight.
Yeah. Yeah, that's coming. Okay, Reverend, any remarks?
Very briefly, just want to thank staff for all of their effort to prepare for this afternoon's work session. I trust that the board found the information useful and that as we continue to develop for these meetings, that we'll make it clear, concise, to the point, and valuable. So I thank everyone for what you've done, and we'll keep working to enhance it.
Thank you. Item 2.09, Board Matters. First item of business on the Board Matters is our Council of PTA joint meeting recap and planning. And the representatives are here. Dee, yes? And Mr. Jordan, I will turn it over to you.
I'll turn it down to the front end.
Well, good evening to everyone.
Good evening.
I want to thank everyone, I mean, I want to thank you all for allowing me to speak regarding the Norfolk Council of PTA, regarding the parents for the Norfolk Public Schools. Because although you all can't see it, I am so excited to be here. It's all bottled up in the inside, but I love talking about PTA. I love talking about family engagement. So for those of you all who don't know me, my name is Dee Bailey, and I am the president of the Norfolk Council of PTA. And what Mr. Jordan and I are here to do today is to give you a recap of our joint meeting. Our joint meeting was held January of this year, and we hosted our annual PTA meeting, and it included the members of the school board. We affectionately called this meeting "Our Joint PTA Meeting." As always, the meeting was very, very, very well attended, and it was a huge success because of your presence. Anytime we invite the school board members out, we get loads of parents always wanting to talk to the school board members. So the purpose of the meeting was so that we can get parents, faculty, staff, and community leaders all talking about Norfolk Public Schools in a good way. We wanted to bring everyone to the table, talking about Norfolk Public Schools. So during the meeting, we split up into three groups, and the three groups had the same question to discuss. The questions were, how can we welcome families in the schools and schools in the home? How can the school board set the tone for meaningful family engagement? And number three, the PTA and the principal, how to develop a win-win partnership? The sessions were co-facilitated by Mrs. Doyle, Reverend Haywood, and Mr. Jordan. We had plenty of robust conversation. I mean, the meeting could have lasted all night. And Ms. Doyle, I think you can attest to that. Parents, they were just so engaged in everything that we were talking about. They were so engaged that when we left the meeting that night, we had 65 suggestions for the school board. And I am prepared to discuss all 65 on today. No, I really am, okay. So, and I know that you weren't. So what the council did was, we took the 65 suggestions and ideas, and we kind of, you know, streamlined them, kind of condensed them, and then we put those questions back out to the parents. We asked the parents, you know, just a couple of more questions, you know, help us to relate to the school board what it is that Norfolk Council PTAs and the local units want to discuss about PTA. The common thread was communication, communication, communication. More communication, a lack of communication, better forms of communication. Communication was the key. So, at our last council meeting, our general board meeting, again, we took that to our local units. And some of the ideas that they said regarding the communication was feedback when speaking at the Norfolk School Board meetings. Now, there was a lot of discussion about that because one of the school board members said, there's already a process regarding that. Some of our parents said they don't understand the process, that they're not getting any feedback. So we came up with maybe a solution. If someone speaks at a school board meeting, maybe have an auto reply back to them just to say, we did get your information. It'll be researched so that parents don't think, I spoke at the school board meeting and it's in a black hole or somewhere. They're just looking for feedback. Another thing that parents would like, they would like to form a parent and/or/or slash student advisory. Let's engage parents in school decisions that impact the quality of education and create a school culture where parents are seen as partners. That's really simple. As we all know, that parents are a very important part of putting the public back in public school. And this will move parents from random acts of involvement to meaningful engagement. That's what we want to do, move from involvement to engagement. And I think, because I am the president of the Norfolk Council of PTA, that if you form that partnership, that the president of the Norfolk Council of PTA should be on that board to help bring the feedback to meetings like this. I've been on the PTA for years, 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 years. I've been on the Norfolk Council of PTA for eight. This is the first time that I know that the president has spoke. And I think that as the president being the leader, to just to let you know what parents are talking about. And not to be, not to have a committee where it's just ceremonial, but have a purpose. So you all know what parents have issues, what concerns, or what suggestions, and then you all can listen to them. Next, parents had a little concern about putting emails back on the website for teachers. Parents are not being able to get in contact with their teachers. They want the emails back. Some emails you can get, once you get the email, you can always communicate with the instructor. But I remember a couple of years ago, you can pull up a school, you can go to that section, pop on that email, and email that teacher. Parents are saying they can't do that now. And again, it's all about communication. They want to communicate with their teacher. Another thing is, parents really want to be involved, but they need to know about the volunteer process. A lot of parents did not know about the volunteer process. I'm going to even throw myself in there because I've been around Norfolk Public Schools forever. And until we had that meeting, I didn't know about the volunteer process. I've been volunteering without going through the process. So.
Well, it's updated, it's new, it's new.
So we had some parents who knew everything about the process, and then we had some parents who didn't know anything about the process. So what we want to do is, without compromising the integrity of the process, let everybody know about it. You know, demystify the process. People just don't know about the process. And again, parents want to volunteer, but they have to know what the process is. I also say, because I know that I talked to Carlos Clanton, and he's willing to come to our PTA board meeting and train parents. But that's only going to be a small amount of parents he's going to train. So we need the information to the school so everybody is on one accord. Because again, you can't volunteer if you don't know the process. And that could be a hindrance to someone. I also thought it should be a level of volunteerism or credentials. Because I work in, I work for social services, but I'm always in the prisons and I'm always in the jails, and I have to go through a background check every year. Why can't my background check satisfy Norfolk Public Schools' background check? So I wouldn't have to go through your same process. You have the same with military. If they have a security clearance, why can't their security clearance satisfy Norfolk Public Schools' process for being on the volunteer list? Another thing, which is my personal favorite, and I hope that you all like this one too, parents would like more conversation with the school board. They would like it to be conversational. So what I am proposing is, we have two joint meetings, not just one as the years pass. I think that if we have a joint meeting in the beginning of the school year, listen to the parents' ideas and suggestions in the beginning, then have a second one like in February. You shouldn't hear those same suggestions, you shouldn't hear those same concerns. Because somewhere down the line, they're not being addressed. You should hear new stuff on the second half of that joint meeting. Then if you have that parent slash student advisory committee, you're knowing all the way around what's up for the next session. So again, if we can meet with you all twice a year, and I know that this is your planning, so if you can put us on your schedule for next school year to have it twice, the Norfolk Council of PTA and the parents would appreciate it. Because when you all came out to the meeting, you saw just how many parents we had. They love the working session. They want to talk to you all. They want to be able to reach out and touch you. That's what parents want to do. It's all about communication. If you want to bridge the gap, it's about communicating with the parents. And parents want to be involved. And if you all know me, I'm real animated, and I tell people, it's not PTA anymore because I'm so excited about it, it's PTY for the PTA. Because I want to get people excited about Norfolk Public Schools, excited about, you know, working with our school administration. So again, if we can have two sessions instead of one, you will make a lot of people happy. That's all I have to say.
Run out and do something right now.
Mr. Chair, before you go to questions. So for some reason, Ms. Bailey was nervous about what should she say?
Yeah.
Not much more I can add to that. But I will say that as we talked about earlier, we were going to take these recommendations and filter them back through that family engagement policy that we mentioned earlier. The other item that came up at the first meeting and I've continued to hear about, if you recall, at the January meeting, we had a lot of young people there.
Mm-hmm.
And I have been challenging them because they were supposed to come and, you know, follow up with some things. But some other districts have developed a process for having a youth board member. And so I think that's something as well that maybe we can talk about. How do you look at some best practices and see if that's something that we can incorporate? Reverend Haywood and I had the opportunity to go over to Norview High School last Friday and look at some of the senior projects. And when you get that opportunity to engage with students, they have worked on ideas that we've talked about as a board, and they have some great solutions. And I think if we can look at perhaps having that youth board member, that might be another way for us to not only engage with the parents, but also strengthen that relationship with our students.
Dr. Stuart, thank you, Mr. Jordan.
You were elected president.
When you were elected President, I thought I heard the call four more years. Are you President next year?
No, I only, I did my two years and that's it.
Okay.
I can't run anymore, that's it.
You got a deep bench though. Very good, very good bench with the Norfolk Council of PTA.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
And thank you for the presentation. I mean, it's been powerful, really. And the board members that were there for the, I was unable to be at that particular event. But for those who were there and facilitated, co-facilitated these groups, I think this is really good feedback that's been captured here. And I think a great measure of our success as a district is going to be on how will we really follow up on many of these, they're powerful recommendations. And I agree with you, I think that many of our parents desire to be engaged and often have, don't know how. And I don't think we are always really aware of the barriers that we may, you know, have in place. But, so I really hope we will take these recommendations to heart and as you go through the next step, as a board, I think we should make sure that we are really in tune with these and do whatever we can do from our seats to help remove, I will use Dr. Stewart's term, remove barriers from, in this case, from parents, right? Yes, Dr. Gabriel.
Thank you for coming. This is great. We need to have this type of interaction with, we cannot operate as a silo and we might even consider having one of our work sessions to coincide with the, with the meeting and in that way, we're all there and we can be efficient with our time and therefore make the time for what is truly important and that is working with parents and teachers and getting the students' opinion. And I'm, I'm just so excited. This meeting has just had so many wonderful topics that have been brought up. But it, just to put the cherry on the top, we started with, first of all, I think you've done a phenomenal job with transforming the Norfolk Council of PTA. Just fantastic.
Thank you.
From when I was the, one of the original members there. So, but to take an idea, get the feedback, bring it to the board, work towards the meetings, and then get continuous feedback on that. I think we're on a trend here. We've seen it with the teacher questionnaire that Dr. Bert Song initiated. We've got feedback from teachers, they brought it to the board, the board listened to it, we're acting on it. And hopefully, we're going to start to see some of these ideas come to fruition and that is the process that it's all about. Because we don't have the solutions to everything. It all has to come from you all and from the collective wisdom of the group. So I'm just so excited about it.
I'm excited.
So thank you for being here and I'm looking forward to two meetings at least with you all.
Okay, I got one vote. Okay.
Dr. Robinson?
Thank you so much for your presentation and thank you for, so much for your enthusiasm and your passion for what you do. This is a theme that I, I repeat over and over again, that parents are the first and most influential teacher in a child's life. And I saw that when I was a teacher, I saw that with my children. And I think anything that we can do to expand and build and grow upon this is a good thing for, for our kids, number one, and for the district as a whole. The second thing is, I really like the idea of the student and parent advisory councils. My son, when he was at Granby, he sat on the superintendent's advisory board and really gained from it and thought he felt like he was listened to and that he could contribute. Edward Demme started the resurgence of Japan with total quality management and kaizen thinking on taking feedback from the ground up and implementing changes for the positives. So I think that's a, I think that's something that Norfolk Public Schools should embrace and move forward.
Thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you.
One last thing, Ms. Tann, I thought she was going to join us, but she's back there and she has been great support to the city council, just want to recognize that.
Yes.
And Dr. King was very helpful in, in supporting the NCPTA. And Dr. Thornton has stepped right in, so we appreciate that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Just before I make my comments, or as I make the comments on the master milestones meeting for the 27th, I'm going to pass the agendas around for the 20th so you can quickly review them. Of course, Dr. Thornton and I will have to head over to Granby here momentarily for the city's public budget hearing. But in terms of the master milestones planning, I've spoken with Dr. Stewart and of course, he and Dr. Gabriel, they have served as our subcommittee on this, on this matter and done a fine job at it. And so I know they are, they will be working together to help shape the framework for that agenda and then we'll be getting feedback from them very shortly. I would say any thoughts or recommendations for that meeting, I would, I would encourage you to call Dr. Stewart. His number is on most websites. I, I thought about that outside of, but if there are any comments or questions on that right now, certainly open the floor for, for the master milestones meeting.
I think we should look at this as a brainstorming session to think outside the box, think long-term, how we can bring this all together. It's not going to be a be-all and end-all. We're not going to come up with a definitive setup, a flow chart, but we can come up with some creative thinking and take where we're at now and begin that process of implementing what we've got in the strategic plan, what we've got in with facilities and try to bring this, this big bear together, but realize it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a big thing to tackle.
And I think it's one of the big pieces of it and it's something that's been done each time we've had it on the agenda, is looking at the status of each of those items and really looking at, what does the 12 month, next 12 months look like as it relates to our master milestones, similar to the question that Rodney asked regarding educational planning. So we can be very clear on what we've accomplished, what's the status on those master milestones, whether it's CTE, pre-K, or whatever. And what do we, definitely want to make sure we implement next school year and then keeping those other matters on the radar and in this case, again, quote unquote, progress monitoring. And that was in addition to your comment, not in, you know, opposition.
Dr. Gabriel and I will be chatting about this more, but I'd like to ask Dr. Thornton in advance if, since this is kind of a commencement activity, you know, commencement, we have two meetings, the ending of something and the beginning of another, if some, maybe two of your colleagues complete with charts could be present to capture things that are said by the school board so that they're not just lost? That's, that's been one of the issues. So if there's a way that you could invite a couple of your colleagues to come complete with charts so that if there's a statement made that is just unforgettable, that it's captured.
Yes, sir. We'll do that.
I would also suggest that Dr. Stewart and Dr. Gabriel, that you connect with Dr. Thornton sooner than later to coordinate that afternoon with him as well.
As soon as we chat, we will, and I have my meeting with you on the 12th and Dr. Gabriel has hers upcoming, so we've got plenty of time. It's a great idea.
Okay.
But again, I see this as commencement activity.
Good. Look forward to it.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. You have in your possession now the agenda for May 20th. And so if there are any questions or comments on that, we will welcome them and then...
Do you have a schedule on the 13th?
I'm sorry?
Want to remind people about the 13th?
Oh, yes, on the 13th, I'm sorry. You do have the top sheet, there is the meeting for next Wednesday, the 13th, which will be our meeting with the VSBA more specifically regarding the superintendent's search. And at that time, they will provide, be providing us with an overview of their process and timeline. And of course, that is a public meeting. And, and then you have attached there also the meeting for May 20th. Our next agenda planning meeting is next Thursday, is what I have.
Yes.
14th. And that time, we'll be planning the work session for June. June 3rd is the June work session and one week later, the 10th, is the business meeting, which will normally be on the 3rd Wednesday, but because of graduation schedule, June's business meeting will be the 2nd Wednesday, the 10th.
Just to go back, just go back to the, to the search, there were some preliminary dates that were sent out for the board to look at and just want to put that back on the table because it's going to be a lot of dates we're going to have to be able to, to integrate. So just want to remind you, we were hoping to, at least to try to get some feedback on that today. But if you just, again, look at those dates and try to adjust your calendar because I think once we get rolling, it's going to be a pretty, pretty fast-moving train.
So can I make a suggestion? Today's Wednesday. How about if by Friday, we email Mr. Jordan with the dates that we can or cannot attend so that we know how large a complement of a board attendance will have on certain dates? Because then, perhaps between then and Wednesday, you can round back with VSBA to either find alternative dates on days that may not work.
Right.
So if we could commit to getting back to Mr. Jordan?
That would be good and I had the opportunity to speak briefly with Ms. Banks earlier and so she has all that information as well. So whether it's sent to me or sent to her, we'll, we can make sure we get that feedback.
Okay. Yeah. Because then that'll allow you to talk to Gina in advance to then maybe change some dates if necessary.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, Dr. Stewart.
What I don't see is something that's going to go really quick to my priority and that is, when you get the final number from across the street, we're going to have to deal with that. We're going to have to talk about that. So is there a date you anticipate?
I would...
Because that's going to fall to the front, in my opinion, on all of us.
At the latest, as a June work session, we will have details.
Okay. No sense before then. And the other thing is, I need personal help. On my calendar for tomorrow at 6:00 PM, I have me doing something and I can't figure out what it is. Are we doing something tomorrow night at 6:00 PM?
No, that was in error. That was the earlier evening of excellence.
So that's now Monday.
It's now the 13th evening.
Oh, sorry. Thanks.
So if I'm not mistaken, correct, Evening of Excellence Teacher Awards, it's not tomorrow, May 7th, but it's May 13th?
That's correct. Thank you very much.
So there's nothing tomorrow evening?
Solve that problem.
Okay.
As previously, the superintendent's search was previously on that day that we...
Well, it still is. That's 2 to 4. And then the Evening of Excellence is in the afternoon.
Okay, so...
It's in the evening, I'm sorry. Evening of Excellence is what, 5, 6-ish?
There was a caption at 5:30 and the program at 6:00.
Well, I'm taking Nancy to dinner tomorrow night. Thank you.
Enjoy. Well, listen, Dr. Thornton and team, thank you all for a really good meeting for your preparation and excellence in presenting the content for the matters, items of business on the agenda. And of course, this is Teacher Appreciation Week and we certainly want to express our appreciation for all of the hard work. I mean, truly, they are the quote unquote boots on the ground that get it done each day in front of our students. And we greatly appreciate their work and diligence and, and continue to wish them well. And so it's from all of us to all of them. If there are any final comments from any board members, we want to make sure we aren't late for the budget hearing.
I wanted to follow up on that.
Certainly.
To that end, a month ago, I forwarded my letter to the editor about Teacher Appreciation Week. And then I followed up by hand-delivering one. And I know it's just been an oversight for anyone listening from the pilot, but it certainly is sad that someone forgot to put in the newspaper, they have Nurse Appreciation Week?
That's it.
Big insert. They are appreciating the hospitality week. We need the hotel industry. But it's a shame that the Virginia Pilot, I'm sure it's unintentional, has failed to recognize Teacher Appreciation Day, which was yesterday, and Teacher Appreciation Week. So thank you for mentioning that. I, for one, join you in greatly appreciating all who teach. And that includes all the administrators who are here because they're all teachers.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Dr. Robinson?
I just want to reiterate how fantastic an education is possible in Norfolk Public Schools. The Washington Post published a study of ratings of the schools throughout the country. And for the, in the state of Virginia, in the South Side, Maury High School, Maury High School ranked number two on the South Side and number 36th in Virginia and 600 out of 22,000 high schools in the country. It puts them in the top 3%. Granby is third in the region, in the top 5% of all high schools in the country, and Norview is, is eighth in the region. You can get a fantastic education in Norfolk Public Schools and it's time that we start trumpeting that as much as we can.
I agree. Thank you, Brad. Noel?
Dr. Thornton, thank you for sending the, the email out to the board members of the email that you sent out and the letter that you sent out to the teachers. I thought it was very heartfelt and every word of it was wonderful and I'm sure that the teachers appreciated it and absolutely, we appreciate each and every single one of them. But I just wanted to comment on the fact that we have said this term before, what is it going to take to turn the aircraft carrier? And it takes a lot to do that. But today, we saw two very specific numbers, okay? That shows that our trend is maybe stabilizing and maybe looking upward. And that was the fact that we are getting new enrollment from outside families and the fact that our average ADM is not on the decline. And that is significant. And what it shows is that a board that works with city council, a board that works with each other, a board that works with its staff and collaborates and communicates and has conversation back and forth, can work together in order to make good, positive trends and outcomes. And I just hope that we can continue that because as the city invests in the schools, as we have had a presentation today on the schools in construction and the programs and as they're going to deliberate on their budget, we can start to see changes that are going to be in the positive and will only mean better outcomes for our students. So I'm happy to see those two numbers here and I'm looking forward to continuing to turn that trend.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, we stand adjourned. Thank you all very much and have a good evening.